Congratulations on the win.[2.29][2.29](laughter)
And actually, we did, we did, we paused this meeting so Lisa can open the meeting up and we'll stand for the flag here.
Okay, I'll call a meeting of Monday, April 24th, 2017 for Village Board and Trustee Orientation Department Head Panel Discussion to Order, and I guess we'll deflect at this time.
Just behind the screen.
Yeah.
To the flag of the United States of America, and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And there's no one here from the public, so let's check in public appearances, and with that, I believe I'm up, so, yeah, I've met with Forrest and Jim Melmore here already, and those meetings have been about an hour and a half long, so I'll spare you all tonight. This will just be-
I've also just worked on that, so-
Yeah, this will just be a quick presentation. J.J. Larson, our Director of Public Works and Utilities, is out of town and unable to make it tonight, so both he and Mike Maloney, the Village Engineer, will do a presentation at the OR meeting on May 1st. The other, the other aspects of orientation will involve a financial advisor, the pillars. They'll come in, they'll do an overview on our tax increment districts, they'll go through the village debt, they'll go through our investments, and they'll give us a refresher on our financial management plan. Also in June, Baker Tilly, our auditors, will come and review the 2016 audit with you all who've become familiar with our financials. An overview of village staff, we have 28 full-time employees covering seven departments that are listed there, and with the exception of Public Works, everyone's here tonight. Given our staffing size, the size of the village itself, and the scope of village government, we utilize some consultants to cover positions that, you know, otherwise don't make sense at this time for just to be full-time employees. You can see some of these consultants here, and over coming months, you'll get to put some faces with the names. Then briefly, on my, on myself, I've been with the village for the past five and a half years. Prior to coming here, I was in the city of Barocla, which is a half ourself across, working in a similar role as I, as I am here. The village administrators appointed by the village, by a majority of the village board. General duties is to carry out the directives of the village board and implement their policies and oversee the daily operations of the village. With that, I'd like to touch base on some of the villagers' accomplishments, and only going to go over a couple slides because I want, I want to take any of the thunder from the rest of the staff here, so hopefully I'm not bringing up too much of some things that they would like to brag about, but these are some, some of the things that I, I think the villages is proud of, and to start, that would be the, a low tax raise, the third lowest out of 26 cities and villages as of 2016, and we're working on updating that now. We should still be in that, certainly bottom five. By almost any standard, I would, I would deem our finances as being outstanding. Recently, the bond rating reviewed by Standard and Poor's increased from AA minus to AA, and that helped us on our latest borrowing, on the latest bond sale that saved the village $250,000. We also have a healthy reserve fund, approximately 25% of the village's expenditures, the amount of expenditures, are saved in the reserve, and that helps the village to limit borrowing for one-time capital expenditures on a, on a plan basis. Just a couple more. Economic growth in the last six years, assessed value has increased by 12%, that's $71 million, and 50, 50 million of that 71 is commercial, and that does not include Summit Credit Union, which is a $20 million dollar development that'll be coming, that'll start construction potentially later this year, but, but likely at the start of 2018. And again, don't want to leave out other, other departments, but just touching on a few, our, our police department is now fully staffed with 12 sworn officers, but fully staffed, I, we're basing that off of a consultant study that was done, if you, if you hear us reference the Monopil report, that's the, the report that that's based on. Chief can correct me on this, maybe it's closer to, maybe closer to 100% now, but about 90% plus of the goals, objectives, tasks from that study have, have been completed, and that's been done in less than a couple of years, so.
Chief, does that include the police officer that's in the school system now?
That'll be-
That'll be 13.
That'll be, yeah.
That'd be 13?
We haven't hired, that, that'll be later this summer.
Okay.
And then, they're also getting close to becoming an accredited police department as well, so that's coming up. That's essentially all I have for tonight. At this time, I think I'll turn it over to our excellent staff who, who are really doing most of the work here, so before that, though, taking questions on this, you know, some of the, some of the basics here.
I think you kind of covered everything in our one-on-one meeting.
Sure. Yeah, I'll pitch it out to Larry on, on Wednesday.
All right. My only question would have been, when you comprise your budget, do you do that with a group of people then, you do your budget?
Yeah, it's a, it's a process that runs from essentially August through December. It, it includes staff here, and their individual departments, and they, they work through their committees, and the committees make recommendations that end up coming to myself in treasure winter, and we compile the budget, I make recommendations, it gets reviewed by both the village president and then the finance committee over, over a couple of meetings, and then ultimately that gets forwarded to the board for a couple of meetings, so it's a, it's a long process.
Okay.
Yeah, we can go over, we can go over that some more on-
All right, I was wondering what role do the trustees have in that at all?
A significant role.
Okay.
Especially if you would end up on the finance committee, but outside of that, the budgets review, yeah, two or three, essentially at least three meetings of the village board, so, yep.
I'll learn that when I talk with you later.
You bet.
All right.
I think Aaron's next.
I left you a copy of, of this on your table there. So I'm Eric, I'm Director of Planning and Development, I've been working directly for the village since 2014. Prior to that, I worked for a private consulting firm, and the village is one of my clients. I spend the bulk of my time just covering some of the different approval processes you'll find yourself a part of, introducing some of the terms you'll hear, and letting you know where you can find some of the background information on these issues. Starting with the comprehensive plan, the contents of the comp plan are dictated by a state statute, those are topics we have to cover, municipality can cover other topics as well, but this is the minimum. And since 2010, any land use decision you make related to zoning, subdivision, that sort of thing, has to be consistent with the comprehensive plan, so it's not just a list of ideals that you put on the shelf and never look at, you actually have to make decisions that are in line with what's in the plan. Our comp plan, the current plan is online through the village website, the link is there, there's actually a separate link for each chapter, given the, the size of the documents. The maps are embedded within the chapters, they can be a little hard to see online, so if you want better copies, just let me know, I can email those to you. We are going through an amendment process right now, I'm looking at the CDA, I'm completely rewriting the economic development chapter, and we'll be wrapping that up hopefully at the next meeting, or perhaps the one after that if there's other changes along. And we're working with the planning commission on redoing how we do our future land use map, and we're taking it more neighborhood by neighborhood as opposed to looking at different land uses, so that process is really just getting started with the planning commission now. There's a lot of different processes related to the zoning ordinance, at a basic level, zoning just regulates how land uses can occur to protect public health, safety, and welfare. And it's basically a tool that we can use to implement the goals and objectives that are in the comp plan. You can find the zoning ordinance text through the village website, as is listed there, and the zoning map is also online, that's how you find it, through the website. Any change to either the text or the map requires approval by the planning commission and the board, so that's what you guys will come in. It can be a little complicated when you first start looking at it, it's kind of in two parts, there's zoning districts such as planned business, or single-family residential, within each of those districts, the ordinance says what uses can occur within those districts or not, and it also talks about some of the physical characteristics that the set-up by actually the building creates, that kind of thing. And then, more specifically, the ordinance also looks at specific land uses, and different land uses might have slightly different regulations even within the same district, and those are usually related to things like parking, or maybe slightly more restrictive setbacks or conditional offering, depending on the use. Also, within the zoning ordinance, we have our site plan review process, we don't do that for a single-family or two-family residential, but any commercial or multifamily would go before the planning commission and the board for approval, those are the criteria we look at. Projects in the commerce park have another approval, they have to go before our architectural review committee because the commerce park is a separate set of covenants unique to the park. Also, within the zoning ordinance, we have conditional use permits, that's for a use that's not allowed automatically because it may have some negative implications on surrounding properties, so this process makes the applicant kind of verify that they can conduct themselves without having negative consequences on surrounding properties.
You mean, like, this block has special activity that you're talking about, or could you give me an example?
Example, pretty much any restaurant does a conditional use permit just because the hours tend to be longer, there's people coming and going more often in bars or anything other than that. Anything with a drive-through because there's additional traffic implications would be a conditional use.
Okay.
In some cases, we might have what's called a planned unit development, in this case, a particular parcel or set of adjacent parcels, the applicant and the village basically negotiate what the standards are as opposed to, you know, a base zoning district. Usually that's done in exchange for benefits from the village, such as higher design quality or something that's going to increase the value of the tax base of the property, so. Summit Credit Union is an example, they're billing a billing that's taller than what they normally allow, but because the height keeps more of the site clear for them to expand later, that's a benefit for us because it can help the tax base later. There's also going to be a signature bill showing key locations we haven't wanted at height, that's one example of that. Zoning ordinance also includes information on landscaping, performance standards, which are things like parking and lighting, sign regulations, and then the last article is all the procedures for how these things are. Subdivision ordinance is the rules for dividing land, and it tells you where you can find that within our ordinances. Basically, two processes, if it's five parcels or more, then it's considered a subdivision, goes through what's called a planning process, that's a two-part process, it's a preliminary plan, you know, final plan, those are approved by the planning commission and the board. Smaller land division, less than five parcels, is what's called a certified surveying map, that's a simple reassess, just one step, but also goes before the fact commission and board. The village, like any other city or village in the state, has extraterritorial jurisdiction. For a village, that means any land division within a mile and a half of our boundary, we approve in addition to the town and the county. That's basically our chance to ensure that any surrounding development that will be growing around eventually will be compatible with, with our future plans for the area. There's also something called extraterritorial zoning, which some people get confused, think they're the same thing, they're not. Extraterritorial zoning means a municipality and a town can write their own ordinance together and regulate it together, we don't have that with any of our surrounding towns. The process we go through is getting urban service area amendments, the urban service area is basically the area where we are allowed to provide sanitary sewer service. When we want expansion of that, we have to go through the AC, the Capital Area Regional Plan Commission, we make our case to them, and then make our recommendation to the DNR, who has the final approval process, and that's supposed to be based on water quality standards. We're actually going through this process right now for a few different areas. Related to economic development, we have three active TIF districts in the village. These are areas where the village can invest money in infrastructure or developer incentives, that kind of thing, to spur development that wouldn't otherwise happen. And when the TIF closes, there's much more value in the district than there would have been prior to those expenditures. So the three districts, TIF number five is the commerce park and some of the surrounding areas, TIF six is the area right around here by any BB, TIF seven is down by the only business park in the old town area, some of Houston, and by 1250.
And Aaron, just to mention, I think you saw what you had on your last slide, but just to touch base on that, a tax increment district is essentially a partnership with the other taxing jurisdictions, so to form that initially, they come together with the village, the village presents a plan, and they, they essentially agree to only accept tax revenue on the value of the land today, and they're saying, with this plan, the village can go ahead, hopefully provide the development, the village gets the entire, the entire tax rate of the school district, the, the county, the tech school, when normally the village will only get our 5.7, $5.07 per thousand, now the village gets the full $23 per thousand and can reinvest that into infrastructure or incentives, so.
Then they should benefit when it closes because they'll get a higher, they'll, they'll be a higher revenue. And just to touch base a little bit on some of the marketing efforts that we do, the land we own in the commerce park, there's still several village-owned parcels up there, we work with Rudy Bush, there are brokers up there, they put together a website specifically for the commerce park, the link is there, we also have economic development information within the village's website, link for that is there. We have kind of a standard marketing packet that we can customize quickly when we get different inquiries, we also send that out periodically to commercial brokers in the Usually around early, late winter, early spring, I'll go around to several businesses, business retention meetings, that's kind of getting their views on how they think business is going in the village, how we can help them. And we also collaborate with the Madison Region Economic Partnership, it's the seven county area around Madison, also the state WBDC, sometimes they'll get inquiries that they pass down to municipalities such as us. Madrep also hosts events that we can take part of, and kind of assess what it has on economic development throughout the region. So that's basically what I had for today, so if you have other questions, come up later, you can always ask me if you're dropping a visit, if you have questions.
Thank you.
Thank you.
We're not going through all of that, are you?
Just 70%.
All right. I'm trying to remember what I called it. Which button do I push?
Slide show on top? From the beginning?
And then you were pushing on one of these?
The arrows.
The arrows. Okay, so the staff, we have 13 officers as of August 1st, and that will be our school resource officer, and the village pays 25% of the cost of that, the school district will pay the other 75%, they will also pay us for any overtime incurred and expenses for vehicles, things like that. We just hired our 12th officer, he began field training last week, and he is a Marine Corps veteran, wounded in Afghanistan, he's been working part-time for other police agencies, and we're very happy to have him aboard, and he's going to be a great officer. That's Lars, he has two lockers in the locker room, I don't know why, but I only have one, Lars has two, and he's just a dog, so I'm a little concerned about what he's got in there and what he's cashing on us, but he's a, Tony Carrasco is the handler for him, Tony lives on the north side of the village here, and Lars has been a great addition to our department, he's primarily used for tracking people, lost people, subjects that have escaped, and for searching vehicles to detect drugs. He has, to my knowledge, he's never bitten anybody in the line of duty, which we're very happy for because those can be very ugly incidents, but he is primarily a very good public relations tool, so when we're out there in parks or at an event or whatever, he is, he's there and interacting and doing demonstrations, the public just loves him, and so not only is he effective for enhancing our policing efforts, but he's also a very good ambassador for the police department.
Does he go into schools at all for checking lockers for drugs?
He does, we do that once a year, sometimes twice a year at the middle school, we don't do it at the elementary schools because I think the chances of a kindergarten or first grader having drugs is slim to none. I can't speak for the staff, I don't know about that, but yes, he goes to the middle school at least once or twice a year per their request, and we don't tell anybody in advance, and the last two years that we've done it, we have nothing whatsoever, so that's The new building, I think it was C.L. Swanson or something like that, was the former tenant, and it was converted into DPW Parks and Rec and then Police Station, and we have garage space for at least seven vehicles and room for expansion of staff, so as far as I'm concerned, it's a great facility, and we are very happy with what we have in there, it makes it a lot easier to do the job when you have the physical plant to do the job, and we're very happy with how it was remodeled. It's very secure for the public, you have a prisoner in there, they're never going to interact with our administrative staff or the public, and it's very safe for the officers too, in that regard. Some of the 2016 statistics that we have, total calls for service, 11,200 throughout the year, calls for service can be self-generated and/or actually someone calling 911 and asking for us to come over, so we have about 11,200 of those per year, and you can see what some of those are, so we had 1,100 traffic stops last year, and fourth one down is traffic arrests, that's actual citations for pulling someone over for a traffic stop, so roughly one-third, quarter people when they get pulled over get a ticket, otherwise it's an educational effort, written warnings, we're, well, we don't do verbal warnings anymore, it's all written warnings. Chief, how does some, how do some of these compare to similar-sized agencies? Well, McFarland, we are very similar to them as far as crime numbers go, probably even a little less, Manona has huge amount of commercial and retail development, so they, they have a lot more property crimes than we would, a lot more burglaries, they have big buy stores there, so they have a lot of, a lot of issues, but we are definitely one of the lowest crime rate cities in the, in the whole state, I think we were 20th safest city in the state last year, somewhere in that range. So we have our problems, but not as much as some other communities do, and we're extremely close to Madison, and we do get some lead-over from Madison as far as problem individuals, but for the most part, pretty, pretty quiet community. What do you think are some of the biggest risks for the community that you see maybe growing trends or anything like that? Drugs, huge problem, we have a lot of heroin out there, as everybody knows, we have a lot of known drug users in the village, and we do have some drug traffickers in the village, so those we concentrate on, that's a big problem. The property crimes is always an issue for us when it comes to people not securing their cars and not securing their residences, so most of the crimes we have committed here are crimes of opportunity, where people just simply don't take the steps necessary to protect their own property, crimes of opportunity, people come in and steal from them, so drugs, property crime, violent crime, very little of that, robberies, very little of that. So EMS assists, that's one of our bigger categories, so the emergency medical staff is based here in the village of Cottage Grove, and that's half the week, the other half of the week, they're down in Deerfield, so that's a 10-minute response time, so all of our officers are trained and know first aid, and we carry AEDs, and we have Narcan which reverses the effects of opiates overdoses, so we are oftentimes the first responders at medical emergencies, some are a little more urgent than others, we get a lot, a lot of old folks in the, in the village, and they call, call for help, and we get there pretty quickly, and they may not be serious medical issues for them, but they sure feel a lot better when someone arrives in uniform and helps them out and listens to them. Domestics, 51 last year, so we, we don't have a lot, which is a good thing, but they are, can be extremely volatile and dangerous, so we treat them with due regard. Our thefts, that's a combination of thefts of, that could be for vehicles, it could be retail theft, it could be a theft of a lawn ornament. So we don't get a lot of, a lot of the retail thefts like other communities do, but we do get our thefts and we do get our burglaries. And then we have goals for 2017. We have a five-year strategic plan, which is way out there. We're planning for the future. And then we have our yearly goals. And our goals for 2017 are to prepare the police department for accreditation. We're well on our way. It's less than a year from now that we'll have the actual accreditation people come to the village and check us out. And I have no doubt we will do very well.
Could you explain a little bit more about what accreditation is and what it means for your department?
It's statewide standards. And there is, it's called the Wisconsin Law Enforcement Accreditation Group, WILIA. And they set standards for every part of an operation of a police department, such as you put handcuffs on someone, you have to double lock up. You arrest someone, you have to read them their rights. You have to post rules in, in your police department on Family Medical Leave Act. I mean, it goes from administration to radio procedures to patrol procedures, records keeping, security of the department. It's comprehensive and there's well over fifteen hundred standards that you have to meet. And so we have to not only show that we have a policy to cover, cover every eventuality, but we also have to prove that we've done these things. So it requires us to have a policy and then a proof for every one of those. And once you get accreditation, that means that you've proven to the accreditation group and law enforcement in general that your department is professional and meets the standards set by this accreditation group. It also can mean that your insurance costs will go down. When I was the police chief, I know when our actual insurance costs went down because we were accredited.
How often do you have to get read?
Well, that's a problem. Once you do it, you have to do it every, every year afterwards.
Okay, so this is a really thing.
Yes, this will never stop. It's the gift that keeps on giving and we're going to be doing it for, forever. But the actual, they actually come on site every three years. You have to prove for every year in between that you're still meeting all those goals and standards. It's a process. And another goal for 2017 is to implement the school resource officer position. That is, that's a little more involved than people would think because we have to actually make sure that they are doing things legally in a school and that the policies and procedures are in place. And we have to pick an experienced police officer to go up there. We'll have to hire a brand new person, put them in there. It's going to be an experienced police officer, so we'll do that in conjunction with the school district. Make sure we get the right person in there. Integrate the twelfth police officer in the department. We've already started on that. Maintain solve rates for the police department. We solve a great deal of the crimes that occur in the village because generally, we have a pretty good idea who did it and we have the time to go find them. And then provide an enhanced effective police programming in Cottage Grove schools. When I started here, we did no programming in the schools. And now we're in every school, teaching safety topics, internet safety, traffic safety, all those things. And the role of a police officer. And we get in there and actually interact with the children so they know what we do and, and that we're approachable and human beings and not just some guy driving by, guy or gal driving by a car. And that's it.
Now, did those goals come out of that MOPHIT report or are those in addition stuff that you've worked, taken into your department?
Yeah, those are some of them. The MOPHIT report had some basic things that you need to do for a police department that weren't in place. And we've accomplished all the goals that we can accomplish. Some were not something that we could do. But everything that was suggested in there, such as making sure you have policies in place for any eventuality, we have all those policies now. So we've implemented all of their strategies. Like an example of one thing that we, we haven't met is a sergeant position. We, we just got a lieutenant position and additional police officers, so we're not going to ask for sergeant position right away. It doesn't make any sense.
She closed it out this bad.
Oh, sorry.
Same person. I think I did the same thing.
Good thing Sean's here, correct?
Yeah, exactly.
Okay, so I am Sean Bruce, I'm the Parks and Rec Director. I've been here, I'd be starting my fourth year on May fifth. So I like to think that I have, if not, one of the best jobs on earth. We get to have fun. And that's basically what we do every single day. We provide opportunities for kids and adults to recreate and have fun. Although the rest of these departments are important, I would support those, no one grants them things, we like to think that we're the most important agencies. So just one thing that I wanted to share with you. Tommy Thompson was our secretary, Department of Human Health and Services in 2003, made a statement that urban recreation and sports programs are proven, common sense, and cost-effective means of preventing crime and delinquency. I wonder if our urban youth crime rate would be different if those programs had not been neglected in the past. So that's one thing that we like to really hang our hat on, is that we provide a lot of opportunities. We don't tell people no. We have a really good base as far as providing scholarship opportunities and we just, we do not tell people no. And we like to think that that's an important part of it. Just want to kind of briefly go through our staff. Director, that would be me, full-time oversees all recreation opportunities. We have a recreation supervisor, she is also full-time. Assistant program supervision, program creation and day-to-day recreation opportunities. We have, also have a twenty-hour per week administrative assistant that we share with Public Works. She takes care of a lot of program registrations, shelter reservations, takes minutes at committee meetings. She does a lot of stuff. She answers the phone pretty, pretty much all the time. She's very important to us. Just a quick overview of our budget. 2016, we had ninety-three thousand dollars in expenditures and we had a hundred, about, roughly about a hundred twenty-one thousand dollars in revenue. So we're, we're growing. We're growing and we're, we're giving back. 2016, we had three thousand one hundred and forty-eight total registrations. Two thousand three hundred ninety-two were residents and seven hundred and fifty-six were non-residents. So that would include the town. That also includes some of Sun Prairie, the town of Sun Prairie, Madison, Manona. We get people from pretty much the entire area. Our fall, in fifteen sixteen, we ran a total of fifty parent programs. In 2017, we'll have expanded that to sixty-two parent programs. That would be, does like, that's like adult fitness. It doesn't count all of the things that go into adult fitness or some of our programs. So we've grown significantly. We continue to grow. And we're fortunate enough that we are literally from three to eighty-three, we, in mid-last year, we did add some senior fitness. So part of the, the beautiful thing of our building that Chief mentioned is that towards the back of where Parks and Recreation, Public Works are, we have a space that we use as an indoor programming space. We've used it for things such as archery. Right now, it's, it's cheer and tumbling as well as an adult fitness room. So that was one, that's one of our, that really solved a big challenge for us, was just a location to be able to do things like that. We were relying on banks, we were relying on schools, and it wasn't always convenient for our customers as to when we could run those programs. So now we are, you know, we're running things at five-thirty in the morning, we're running things at night, we're running our, our senior fitness during the day. It's just really given us a lot of flexibility. We're fortunate enough to receive an anonymous donation for about thirty-five hundred dollars two years ago, so we have, actually have a, a sport court sort of in there. So it's just more like an athletic floor that you can lay down and not hurt your knees on the concrete.
Eighty-three, so Mr. Boucher must have signed up for a program?
Well, we're trying.
That's a, I'm writing that down.
Our parks. So we have nine parks covering eighty-three point six acres. Three special use areas, Oakengate Hill, which is really right behind the old Public Workshop. We have Governor Taylor. Governor Taylor, which is off of Oak Street, and then Thaden Natural Area. This just sucks. Really, I remember these guys that I had appointed and now it's not working. Governor, or excuse me, Thaden Natural Area is kind of right in the center of the village. It's, would be behind Piggly Wiggly. So that's a proverb that we're just kind of sitting on right now. So we have four little league and youth softball fields. One regulation-sized baseball field. Four rentable shelters with restrooms. Three sand volleyball courts. And eight playgrounds. Our parks budget, operating budget for 2016 was forty thousand dollars, which is low. It's low for what we, what we do. We, I believe we do a really good job in comparison to what we could be doing. Just some recent improvements. So Dublin, this is Dublin Park, an aerial view of Dublin Park, which is again more in the, the north center of the, of the village. We put in the village's only full-size basketball courts. We do have other basketball courts that are two hoops, but this one is a regulation high school, full-size court. We re, we moved a playground, so this playground that's here, used to be here, we moved it over to that side of the park to tie it in with the swings. And then we also put, surrounded that with, with a five-foot sidewalk that, that engulfs the whole thing, that makes, the playground area that makes it all ADA accessible. And we also replaced the concrete that surrounds the gazebo here, that had deteriorated. And that gazebo was kind of a hazard. So we, we made that entire park one-hundred percent ADA accessible, which is something that we're looking to do moving forwards, coming up with a transition plan with, with all of our parks. Just got some recent improvements. We did some, Chief loves this, but we did some bleacher upgrades in 2017. So all thirteen of our bleachers were non-compliant, meaning anything over three seats, two seats up, they have to be caged or you could fall off. Back in the old days when those were purchased by the village, there was no such regulations on that. So we did all of those. Each bleacher is equipped with caging to prevent you falling off the back as well as falling through the bleachers. So we're happy about that. We also, this year installed some time locks. And you can see a picture of that right there in all of our shelter restrooms. So in the past, all four restrooms equipped with time locks. So we can set the timer to, as to when those doors are open and when they're closed. So typically it'll be a seven, eight to ten p, which is when our parks are open. But if we need to adjust that and make something, if something is becoming a problem area and we want to maybe close that, those restrooms down a little earlier, we can do that. In the past, we've, we've had to rely on the PD to lock those shelters up. Of course, they did a phenomenal job. I mean, there's often more important things to do than lock up a shelter at night, but it's really made a difference in, in our vandalism. And coming in the spring, we're going to be, there's going to be three shade structures similar to that, they don't, they're not installed yet, that will be at the Kids Park, so Bakken Park. So we'll have some, some much-needed shade down there. And also, it's going to be really cool looking with some, some colorful roofs and just time, we don't have, like currently, we're working towards like a restroom facility at that park. And it's a very busy park. So we, we kind of occupied with a porta potty right now. It's a lot of shade and it's a destination, so you can't really walk there very well. So we're excited about that. Our park staff, myself, we have some seasonal guys. So this year, we have four, three-season, I call them, guys that work eleven hundred ninety-nine hours. And we have four college kids that work about five hundred hours each. We basically run in park maintenance from April third or whenever the weather breaks until the end of October. But we do still rely on DPW for some of the help, especially with bigger equipment and some of the bigger projects. I've said this a hundred times, JBA and I play really well together. He's always been, we've had to rely on them a lot in the past, but we're kind of getting away from that. So now we can, with the, the addition of these seasonal people, we can actually do what, it sounds mundane, but a really important part is mowing. We can control our mowing and that, that's cut back on a lot of the complaint calls that I get from soccer people, that the rest is too long or we can't get out and cut it as quickly as we should. Forestry Division, so oversee all village terrorist trees and properties and right-of-ways. In 2016, we spent eleven thousand six hundred on our budget. We have a village forester. He spends about twenty percent of his time dedicated to forestry alone. About eighty percent of his time is dedicated to Public Works. As of now, most of our projects, so anything, fortunately, most of our terrorist trees are still pretty small. But anything in parks that we need to have, you know, a thirty-foot oak tree trimmed or pruned or something like that, we have to contract, contract that out. But later in 2017, we will purchase a bucket truck, which will save us a good chunk of money, allow us to do some preventative things in the winter that we can't currently do. And plus that would serve, you know, just changing light bulbs throughout the village and things that we currently have to contract out. As far as our trees go, planted fourteen in 2015, twenty-five in sixteen. And also in sixteen, we began training village-owned terrorist trees for EAB. We, we did have our first confirmed case in, in 2016 on Oak Street. So everybody pretty much knew it was here, but that was the first confirmed one. And this will be our twenty-second consecutive year of Tree City USA status. So kind of closing things out, in some cases, the increase in property tax from housing in close proximity to green spaces may equal or even exceed the costs of maintaining them. And that's from the National Park and Recreation Association. That's my spiel.
Are there any projects in kind of far future that you're really excited about or anything you kind of want to?
Bakken Park is one that, we're, right now, we're going through our Parks and Open Space Plan, so every five years, we have to do that. And we just sent out a survey that the results just started to come back in. Hopefully you guys had a chance to, to fill that out. But overwhelmingly, the village would like us to concentrate on what we have and maybe not spread out and grow more. Bakken Park, and I'd love to show you guys, stop in. My door's always open, but we do have a concept for what the rest of that park is going to be. So my biggest excitement would be to continue, or to actually start to develop that park and work our way east towards Fireman's with a shelter. There's a splash pad in there. There's a lot of things that, like four more tennis courts. We have two tennis courts in the village and they're packed. So just kind of catching up on some things that we don't have. That's, that's the one that I want to hang my hat on before I get out of here, is some development of that park.
Okay. Thanks. Thank you.
The doors are always open, please come in. Close that up, Sean.
Well, as you all know, I'm a municipal clerk. And I just wanted to give you a little brief background on myself, being that I am fairly new to the village. I'm in my twentieth year of government employment. I started out as a municipal clerk in a small township in northern Wisconsin where I was the town treasurer. From there, I was elected the town clerk for the same municipality for five years. After that, I was hired by Forest County as the deputy county clerk and served that position for seven years before I moved into the county treasurer, or the deputy county treasurer's position. And then in 2012, I ran for county clerk and was clerk until I was hired in 2016 by the Village of Cottage Grove. Through the years, I've gained a lot of experience with many different aspects of government. It seems like just when you think you've seen it all, something comes before you and you have a new, new challenge in front of you. But at the end of the day, it's always rewarding to see the policies and procedures that communities put in place to make the community better. So with that, we will start. The Department of Village Clerk is under State statute sixty-one twenty-five, which basically tells you what my duties are. And they, I've listed some of them, but it doesn't really give you a full picture of really what happens on a day-to-day basis in, in the However, I'm merely there for the signature portion of it. Deb will explain her portion of that. So what does this really mean to daily office life? What it translates into is the minutes and meetings, alcohol licensing, which you will be taking place with coming in May and June. We'll be renewing those licenses throughout the village. However, we do get operators' licenses throughout the year, but the renewals will be happening at that timeframe. Election administration, which last year was a big one, with presidential. So that varies year to year. Usually, in odd-numbered years, we have two elections, one to two, depending on how primaries come out. In even years, we can have upwards of six elections. We've had that many with recalls, which, that's not a nice word, but it happens every now and then, and it puts more work on the department. Preparation and record ordinances, resolutions, and probably one of the biggest things is the direct line to the public to assist in their requests. Get numerous calls day-to-day. Dog licensing, website administration, crossing guard administration, open records, board review, daily deposits, building permits, record retention. So I mean, as you can see, it goes on and on and on. So what does that mean? Well, every day is a different day. You never know what you're going to walk into. You never know what you're going to pick up on the other line, on the other end of the telephone line. So it's hard to say how to put that into a timeframe of what my day looks like or what happens in the office. It's just, what happens, happens, and we deal with it on a daily basis. So basically, the summary of the duties is to assist the public, staff, members of boards and committees, as requested, to keep the day-in and day-out operations of the village running smoothly, as Matt likes to refer to it, the gatekeeper. I thought it was interesting, and I thought maybe you'd be a good reference to this quote here, since it was from one of the early textbooks about administration. And it says, "No other office in municipal service has so many contracts. It serves the mayor, the city council, the city manager, when there is one, and all administrative departments without exceptions. All of them call upon it almost daily for some service or information. Its work is not spectacular, but it deems versatility, alertness, accuracy, and no end of patience. The public does not realize how many loose ends of city administration this office pulls together." And I think that that's very true on a daily basis, all joking aside. Usually, you know, everything is going to hit the village hall at one time or another, and, and you just, you do work with what you have, and you have to have the patience to serve your public.
Actually, Lisa, when I was in law school, we didn't even have books. We just, they just read to us.
The one thing that I, I wanted to kind of hit base on, as you all are aware, the village is growing, and you all have seen the election process, and being that we just went through the presidential election, and actually, prior to that even in April, you had a busy election cycle. And one of the things I would like for you to think about is the expansion of what those elections look like for the future of the village as it grows, because our home location, which we're standing in right now, is pretty much at capacity. Being that we vote in the village at large and we're not using voting jurisdictions, it makes for a challenge to get that amount of people in this amount of space in the amount of time that we have. So I've been talking with the WEC, which is the Wisconsin Election Commission, and being county clerk, to see where, where we can go in the future. One of the things that we could think about is a second home location. With that, of course, comes expense, because then you're, you're looking at more voting equipment, more poll workers. The other would be possibly a central count location, which there again, you're still going to have expenses with the equipment. The other would be to start thinking about voting, or changing, instead of at-large, to voting districts. We currently have 10 wards within the village, which we're in the process of more annexations, so that would be, mean more wards potentially, which means more population. So just something on the forefront, something to really seriously consider that we're going to be happy to looking at in the near future as the village grows, which is a good problem to have. With that, that's the beginning of the section that we have been answering.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
You guys are putting my PowerPoint to shame.
All right. So this is the section where you learn everything you want to know about the position of the town treasurer, and then some. Just to give you a little background on myself, I was, I've been here for 10 years, actually. This year was my 10th anniversary. Prior to this, I was clerk treasurer. Last year, fortunately, we split my position, and they've got all the stuff I didn't want and made up all the stuff I want. Prior to the village, I was in the private industry, mostly in cellular communications. A little story about that, I worked, I used to work at Ameritech in Chicago, and this is showing my age, but one of the projects I worked on was trying to figure out if text messaging was an efficient form of communication. And at that time, after we went through all the cost analysis, everybody said, oh, that's never going to fly. And we'll get it today. So anyway, I'm kind of going to do this a little differently. I'm going to walk you through a timeframe, and this will help you, Larry, with your question about the budget process and how you're involved. Because the budget process and the tax process are kind of hand-in-hand, and go along with each other all throughout the year. And the first place it starts is with the property assessment, which happens every year. We use Associated Appraisal as our, Associated Appraisal Consultants as our assessors. They have been with the village for quite a few years and have quite a bit of knowledge of properties, excuse me, around the village. It's always assessed as of January 1st, so if you're building a house, whatever's there on January 1st is what you'll be assessed at for that year. Then throughout the year, improvements are done, or new homes are built, assessor sent, has constantly sent that information, so they can work that in to the tax base as well. There's an open book and board review that's held every year, it's a statutory regulation. This year, open book was April 13th, and board review will be May 18th. Between January 1 and open book is when any changes are being made by the assessor. Generally, a revaluation is done every five, even vicious years, and that's when they go through and they actually touch every property, look at every property, reevaluate based on arms-length sales and what's going on with the economy. The village has not had a revaluation since 2007, so it's been 10 years. That is going to be something that's definitely in this year's budget. It is quite costly, so just to put that plug in and make you aware of that item. So then, once the assessments are done from the village, which they are required to have those finished by the second Monday in June, unless there's a revaluation, they can ask for work through an extension. Then the Department of Revenue gets involved and converts, not really converts, but they create their own value, which is called equalized value. This is always kind of an area of confusion from people, because they look at their assessed value, and they look at the equalized value, and they think that there's no way this is worth that. But the Department of Revenue looks at the village as a whole, and estimates the village, the value of the village as a whole, based on sales analysis, and based on the sales use percentage between what the assessments are and what a home's actually been sold for. Assessors look at individual parcels, individual properties. So when you're looking at both of them, it's a two, it's a dual system of property valuation, which is to help guarantee fairness in the distribution of taxes amongst everybody in the municipality. At the same time that they give equalized values, the DOR also releases net new construction numbers. So that's new construction from the prior year that's being worked into the current year's tax base. So once we get those, then the budget process can really begin, because the first step is figuring out what the allowable levy limit is. The current legislation has pretty strict limitations on the levy limits. And basically, the only way, if you're already at your max levy limit amount, the only way you can decrease that is by the net new construction, percentage of net new construction, or by borrowing more money. It seems kind of backwards. But we, as a village, are in a great spot right now. We have quite a bit of capacity that we're not using in our levy limit, which puts us in a good spot, plus we're growing at a fair pace.
Just to step back, Deb, on the, so there's a, there's a ratio that the village needs to maintain between 95% and 105%, and that, that's a ratio between assessed value, which is our local assessment, and the equalized value, which is the state that Deb was talking about. So as long as we're between that 95% and 105%, which we are, we don't technically have to do the revale, but the timeframe of, you know, every five years or so is kind of just a general rule of thumb. But it's been discussed at the past handful, a lot of budget process, it just hasn't made the final cut, but, you know, we'll, we'll certainly present it again in the recommended budget and have a further discussion, so.
So what's the levy limit is set then? In 2016, we, 2016, along with Eleanor, we created a financial management plan, which projects out the next five years, and projects that we want to do, growth rate, et cetera. So that, the levy limit, the financial management plan, and then the first step with setting the guidelines for the budget is through the finance and personnel committee. They kind of express what their goal, be it a 3% increase or a flat, where they would like to see the budget come in for the current year. So that gives, those three items give staff a starting point to start creating the budget for the current year. And then, once the budget guidelines are set, the department heads actually submit their numbers for their, for their areas of responsibility, and also look at any additional projects they're, they're wanting or needing to do that would be beyond normal operating expenses. Payroll is done. I usually incorporate payroll into all the departments as well. So that is put together along with their areas of responsibility, and then the department heads also work with Matt for capital expenditure needs. We do a capital expenditure plan out of five years also. And then, once we get those, put them all together, and that's basically our first draft.
Okay, when you say first draft, that's something that you can discuss and say, hey, this is going to work or not going to work. You can send it back to them. They can recalibrate and send it back to you. You can come to do another draft.
Right. Yep. And the whole budget is pretty fluid from August to final hearing.
Okay. And something that it's, that I've learned is not, something that's done everywhere that we do here, is projects or potential expenditures that have been cut from previous drafts are never completely, aren't completely dead, meaning even at the final budget workshop, we still have each department discuss, you know, the merits of a potential project or item that is not in the current draft. And almost every year, there's one or two of those items that weren't in the recommended budget that end up getting moved in and something else gets taken out. So everything's alive until the, the end.
To the end.
Yep.
Thank you.
So once the final draft is, is created, the first review goes to Matt, as the administrator, making sure that the budget falls within the guidelines that the finance and personnel committees have set, and there aren't any complete outliers in the, in the plan. From there, it goes to the village president. And he also makes revisions, cuts as he sees. And then it also goes to the finance and personnel committee. Finance and personnel committee then actually make the recommendation to the board. And that is done through the budget workshop, which is when the whole board gets together along with staff. We discuss the budget, the operating projects, excuse me, the whole nine yards. That's where we discuss what projects each, each person thinks they need for the next year, prioritize them, see what can fit and what can't fit. And it's also fluid in the sense that a lot of numbers are still trickling in. A lot of the benefit information, I don't get until the last minute, state aids, I don't get until the last minute, so it's, it's always moving. And then in November, through the tax process, I also have the, any delinquent utilities have to be put on tax bills, any special assessments that have been assessed for different projects throughout the village are put on, special charges for mowings, no removal that wasn't completed is put on, along with, that's the same, around the same time that I'm getting the tax certifications from the different jurisdictions, from the school districts, the state, the county, MATC.
Deb, I can, I can also, I had to interrupt you. The fi, the finance committee's initial review might be different starting this year, because this will be our first year with the approved financial management plan. So the, the goal of the financial management plan is that, that current upcoming year, the way that's laid out is essentially the, the direction for that given year. So the plan will be reviewed annually, so it doesn't, so the five-year plan doesn't quickly turn into a two- or three-year plan over time, so it needs to be updated annually, and it'll be done at that committee, and they can recommend tweaks to it and that sort of thing. So the, the nice thing is we'll have a starting point instead of, you know, yeah, when you go in front of a committee and ask for general direction, I mean, the goal is always, if you can, let's, let's shoot for zero. But the idea of the plan is that there's, there are certain purchases and things like that over time, and capital projects that hope to, that you hope to do at some point, and to do that, you may have to have some increases, so, but they're planned for, and that's the idea.
Okay. So after the budget workshop, and we get kind of a final product, it has to be finally approved in a public hearing.
Deb, I can also, I had a chance to interrupt you. The finance committee's initial review might be different starting this year because this will be our first year with the approved financial management plan. So the goal of the financial management plan is that, that current upcoming year, the way that's laid out is essentially the direction for that given year. So the plan will be reviewed annually, so it doesn't, so the five-year plan doesn't quickly turn into a two- or three-year plan over time, so it needs to be updated annually, and it'll be done at that committee and they can recommend tweaks to it and that sort of thing. So the nice thing is we'll have a starting point instead of, you know, yeah, when you go in front of a committee and ask for general direction, the goal is always, if you can, let's shoot for zero. But the idea of the plan is that there's, there are certain purchases and things like that over time, and capital projects that you hope to do at some point, and to do that, you may have to have some increases, so, but they're planned for, and that's the idea.
Okay, so after the budget workshop, when we get kind of a final product, it has to be finally approved at a public hearing. It has to be publicized and then 15 days later, approved at a public hearing. This is generally done the last meeting in November, first meeting in December. And that is finalized, and we've gotten the final budget all approved by the board, then I need to take that and balance it all with the county, with the state, with the taxes, which includes all the real estate and then all the special assessments, the tax increment, district increment included in there as well. And then they go to grants by the county and sent back, we stuff them, and they have to be mailed out by the third Monday in December. And then the collection process begins. And just to give you kind of an example of the amount of money that comes through the door, mainly in the last two weeks in December, last year, our standard of taxes, total standard of taxes was $14,700,000. Just as a side note, 3.4 million of that was the village's portion, so only 23%. But of the total 14,700, we collected 7.6 million in December, so basically two weeks or 52% of it. And then the remainder, 4.8, was collected in January, through January 31st. So municipalities collect the first installment or the full amount, if that's what they said to pay, through January 31st, and then everything's turned over to the county. They assess any penalties and taxes for those that are delinquent and/or they collect the second installment as well, which is technically due July 31st. The county makes the municipalities whole on real estate taxes, they do not on personal property tax. So once the final deadline of July 31st passes, we get our final settlement announced. Any questions in that process?
I have one.
Sure.
Where do you sit with people that are totally delinquent in regards to?
For real estate?
Yeah.
For?
For not paying taxes at all.
For real estate, we, the county does all that. They deal with any collection.
Okay.
And they have their processes, they, after so many years, can take the money out.
Okay. Do you ever lose out on tax money at all?
The only thing we lose out on is personal property.
For personal property?
Mm-hmm. And that's self-reporting, and there's no recourse that we can do to make someone pay. We just ended up writing off a sizable amount last year, which we haven't written off in over 10 years, so in the scheme of things, it's not too bad, but, yeah. And they're looking, legislation is looking at that whole process, hopefully, getting rid of it, replacing it with some other kind of state aid.
Okay.
But it is up right now. But that's the only way we really lose. Any other questions on that? And then, just kind of touching on all the other outside of the tax and budget process, I'm responsible for the payroll, which is bi-weekly, monthly, quarterly payrolls, new hires, interminations, and then management of all the benefits that go with all that. Like I mentioned, personal property tax invoicing and collection. Any personal property that hasn't been paid as of February, the end of February, that I start invoicing every month in hopes that somebody will pay. Cash management is also a large part, reconciling all the cash and investment accounts. We use Ameritrade right now for a sizable portion of our cash balances, trying to get a little bit better interest income. He will be getting quarterly cash reports that'll show you all the investments accounts, uses and sources for those. I also need to do a solid recycling grant application and then an annual actual report in order to get our recycling grant payment every year. There are, so, special assessments that are not paid through the tax year, if they come into the county, the county actually pays those separately, so there's a whole reporting on that as well. Any special assessments that we do, this year we're slated to do the SEDAL plat, so there'll be new special assessments with those. So the invoicing and collection of the payments for those. Any debt payment and management, typically we pay debt payments twice a year, and then we also, if there's any new debt issued, or the environmental fund debt, which is a little bit different, that's due the state, we have safety and water loan as well as clean water loan. Those are generally utility projects, so like the North Water projects, I kind of love to do that. Fixed asset management, along with maintaining the proper insurance for everything. Every year, we always have a manual audit, obviously, so I have to deal with those. Any questions in reporting for that? And then, any monthly financial statement review and questioning from staff, from trustees, bingo. That's it.
And then, last but not least, Mr. Boucher.
Well, I'm pleased that the bingo tournament I was at was able to get done in time so I could be here. All kidding aside, I've been the, I've been an attorney now for 38 years, and 34 of those years I've been the village attorney. I've also represented a number of other municipalities in Dane County, including the city of Monona, portions of the city of Middleton, a couple of towns, and so I have a lot of municipal experience. And I've certainly enjoyed being the village attorney out here. When I first started, there were 600 people, so it's, and we met in the basement of Flynn Hall with asbestos pipes above us, and the crowd, when they came for a hearing, would sit in back of you and punch you in the side and ask whether you were going to be for or against the particular issue. So that always made being the attorney particularly exciting. Tonight, what I'd like to do is just give you a very broad overview, because I try to work these in during the course of meetings so that you, I mean, because I can just, you'd just be inundated otherwise. But just a couple of highlights. By virtue of being a trustee, you're subject to village ordinances, state statutes, the open meeting law, and the open, the public records law, and these are downloads from the Attorney General's Office. They're the most recent drafts from November of 2015, and each year, I try to give you a handy-dandy, nice cover, so we went with the light green and yellow this year. You're also subject to various ordinances in the village, and one of the things that I would urge you to do as a village trustee is to take a look at the first couple of chapters in the village ordinances. There's one that deals with the village board, but also, as you are appointed to different boards, committees, or commissions, to take a look at those particular ordinances and familiarize yourself with what is the role that I'm playing, or is this board, committee, or commission playing. There's something that I like to call the chain of responsibility that all of us are part of, and that is to understand that the village board, our seven trustees, and that includes the village president. The village president is a trustee and is a member of the board, unlike in a city where the mayor is not part of the board. And the village president is a trustee with a few more administrative tasks, but each trustee has to keep in mind that they only have such power as what the board gives them. So, for example, if you say, yeah, I'd like you to research the constitution, and I'll see you in a couple of months, well, that's great, but I would certainly come back to the board and say, this is what I've been asked to do. Generally, everything is run through MAT and the village president, and then I'm approved or they say, yes, go ahead with that or not. When you have individual questions, if it's something that's pretty straightforward, it's perhaps the night of the meeting, you know, you can certainly contact me, but we try to make sure that we work through this, you know, this chain of responsibility. Also, as far as meeting procedure, I've had a number of trustees, when they've started, they've told me that the thing that they're most fearful of is that they'll say something stupid at the meeting, and that's, that may or may not be true, but their concern is in terms of procedure. And what I have developed over a period of time, I've called Robert's Rules Light, which is essentially, you know, I have been at municipalities where they strictly followed Robert's Rules. And then, a month or two later, that same person would say, well, I want to do this or that. We say, no, I'm sorry, you can't do that under Robert's Rules. Well, you know, we don't really want to apply Robert's Rules to that. So to try to be fair, what we do is, we generally have, someone makes a motion, it gets seconded, then it gets discussed, and then it gets voted on. So it's nice and simple, and there are all sorts of different types of objections or different ways of approaching it, but I really think that that's the fairest way, is to just try to keep it short and simple, and we'll kind of talk people through, particularly if you're running a meeting. One of the things that we've tried to institute out here with somewhat limited success is have a certain period of time that people can talk, and it says it right on, you sign in back there, and it says, you know, please limit your comments to three minutes. Now, on a night where there's only one or two people in the audience, that doesn't seem so important. On a night that you've got 100 people here, all of whom want to say something or at least be recognized in some fashion, it can be important. So that's something that the board's going to have to decide what they're going to do. I'm just going to stop there and just tell you that I'm certainly available to talk with you before or after a meeting. If you feel that there's something that's on the agenda that might prove to be a conflict for you, please let me know. And also, if you have a question for the meeting, please feel free to give me a call and just say, hey, tonight I'm going to ask you this or that question. I love surprises. Sometimes, all I can do is say, I don't know, I'll have to get back to you, and if I have an opportunity to prepare, then I'll try to have an answer for you. So I'll certainly answer any questions that you have. Otherwise, as you start your stints as trustees, we'll try to point out areas to be concerned about. One other thing that I would just mention is this, from this point forward, you should assume that anything and everything that you write is probably public record. Now, if you have a private email, that's different, but don't mix the two. And the Supreme Court hasn't really made any definitive decision on private versus public, but my sense is that the court, if it's really poised, is going to just say, everything's public. And so, and you'll have to prove otherwise. So my suggestion is to try to limit your email account with the village to just village matters, and your private can be for anything other than that.
And then something to add, Lee, and this isn't meant to scare anyone, but a note from our insurance carrier that we always share with newly-elected officials is, you're covered under the village's insurance as long as you're acting under the scope of the position. And what we mean by that is your scope as a board member, and if, for instance, as an example, you'd happen to individually get involved in a village project or development and caused an issue, the insurance carrier may deem that you acted outside of your scope, and if there was a lawsuit brought, you could be individually liable. So, you know, if you ever, you know, find yourself in a situation and you're questioning that, I mean, talk to myself and Lee and, you know, we'll help out. But in general, I mean, that's a, it's an extreme case, but it's something that the insurance, you know, always drives home with us, so, yeah.
We will be?
Go ahead.
We will be given a village email address.
Yes.
Am I correct?
Yep.
Okay. And a notebook or a use?
Tablet.
A tablet, so that we can have that out there for the public to email us, and we can email them back, and we can address the public that way.
Correct.
Okay, great.
Yeah, the problem arises, Larry, where you've got just one email account, and then you've got both village and private on there, and then someone says, well, I want all emails relating to this, and so you, you know, you give me those emails, and they say, well, I think there's more than that. Well, you know, then that kind of opens up the possibility of having to look at your private.
Right.
So that's all I have. I do have, like I say, some handy-dandy handouts for you. Wouldn't want you to go home empty-handed, but I, we will, as the meetings progress, try to touch on these different areas for you.
Thank you for coming and.
You bet.
Looking forward to.
I appreciate all your time.
Appreciate your time.